The Full Exposure Podcast is brought to you by Metro Health, University of Michigan Health, and Dr. Peter Hahn, in appreciation of the creative and artistic visionaries who enrich our lives through cultural connections. Hey, 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 everybody, welcome to another edition of Full Exposure with me, your host, Brian Kelly. I cannot wait to jump into this episode with Joe Jones. If you don't know Joe Jones, that's on you, okay? He is very much, very visible in the community in a lot of different ways, wears a lot of hats in this community, quite frankly. And for this particular conversation, I wanted to speak to Joe largely through his role as Second Ward City Commissioner here in Grand Rapids. But he's also President and CEO of the Grand Rapids Urban League. And if that's not enough, you know, you gotta wear a lot of hats. Joe's got a lot of hats. And he's also Assistant Pastor at Brown Hutcherson Ministries. Hutcherson, I didn't, I hope I didn't butcher that. Brown Hutcherson Ministries. So he's a man who's very, very, very focused on racial equity, inclusion, getting people a seat at the table, getting people up on their feet, no matter who you are, where you're from, what your educational background is, how much money you have in your pocket. He's getting everyone connected to resources to moving their lives forward. And for this conversation, I think it was great to talk to him as a Second Ward City Commissioner. He's not particularly political or politically careful. It's a candid conversation about where we're at as a city. We're going through some changes and challenges. We also, at a time when we're experiencing like every community in the country, a bit of, a lot of conversation around the ideas of equity, inclusion, and fairness. And Grand Rapids has had some gaping wounds ripped open the last, throughout 2020. We just have a history that we need people like Joe Jones at the city commission level and moving us forward as a community together. What I'm most impressed about Joe, and I've gotten to know him over the last three or four years, he's a great leader, a strong leader, very, just someone you can talk to and you feel like he's listening. He's empathetic, he's very analytical in his approach to what's happening. He's non-emotional even when people are coming at him emotionally, which is something I couldn't do. He's well-suited for his job at the Second Ward City Commissioner and representing the Second Ward. And so this is a good conversation, and I couldn't wait to get it out to you. We came to the studio, just like every other portrait session, you know, or part of the premise of the podcast, is you come to the studio, I create a portrait of the guest, and then we sit down and talk about whatever we want. So this is my conversation with Joe Jones. And let's explore the bigger picture now with City Commissioner, President and CEO, Assistant Pastor, Joe Jones. Okay, Joe, what'd you have for lunch today, or breakfast?
I had tacos from Taqueria San Jose for lunch.
Arguably the best taco place.
I would suggest the same, yeah.
It's a good stuff.
Yeah.
Boy, the Barry White did kick in, dude.
It's natural.
It's coming in. I feel it. Joe Jones. Cool. Uh, okay, so we were talking, Joe, we are recording now, but Taqueria San Jose.
Yeah.
Tacos today, right?
That's right.
It was the real deal.
At least once a week, sometimes I'll, maybe I'll be disciplined and do it every other week, but yeah, I get the same thing all the time.
What is it? What's the go-to, Joe?
For me, it is one chicken, so that's one pollo.
Yeah.
And one asada.
Yeah.
Taco supreme with no onion.
Okay, so I can't get enough of anything pastor. If it's, you know, the pork, the pork pastor, and they have a good, they're, yeah, that place is good. I also like the legacy of that place, it's like a root beer stand.
Yeah.
You know, like it's on Division, you pull in this, like, what's going on here? And it's just killer tacos.
Yes.
It's so good. All right, well, Joe Jones, thank you very much. I wanted to welcome you. Of course, we go back a way, so it's not like we're completely new to each other, but we've had some one-on-one conversations. We've, I think we even saw Maxwell Concert together.
We did.
A long time back in Angela. Angela set us up with some tickets there, or put a group together. We bought our, just for all you city government, we bought our own tickets via Angela.
That's right.
So, but, and then I've been by the Urban League and talked about stuff and talked about projects and things like that. But I think the lens I want to see, no pun intended, the lens through which this conversation is primarily, although I'm interested in a lot of things you're doing, but as Second Ward City Commissioner of Grand Rapids. And how long have you held that post now?
I was appointed back in 2016 and elected in 2017.
And you were appointed, why? Remind me again.
I actually was appointed to replace the mayor.
Oh, yeah.
She was just elected mayor, and when her term, when she took over as mayor, there was a appointment process. And so I applied and was able to impress my colleagues enough to where they said yes to my, to my role.
Yeah.
To replace her.
What was the catalyst to get into, had you been in politics before?
Interestingly enough, growing up in Detroit, my idol was Coleman Young, who was the first African-American mayor. And I literally wanted to be the mayor of Detroit when I was a little boy.
Yeah.
And so when I moved here, I had a love for politics, I had a love for politics in Detroit, was very active in community. And so, believe it or not, I moved here in 96, I first ran for office in 99. I ran for Third Ward City Commissioner.
Yeah.
I ran against.
Wait, but at that point, were you, were you running the Urban League at that point?
Nope.
Okay.
I was, what was I doing? I was, I was working in sales and marketing for a local company. And my, my opponents were Reverend Robert Dean, Bill Blickley, Bing Goy, and Alex Murdasky. And I'll never forget that. And I got.
Polish guy in the Second Ward? What?
Third Ward, actually.
Third Ward, sorry, Third Ward.
Yeah, because I lived on the southeast side. And I came in third place, man. I lost, in fact, I was a couple of hundred votes away from moving on to the general election. And I'd only been here for two and a half years. I was called a carpetbagger.
Really?
Oh, yeah, dude, it was, it was ugly.
Politics is ugly, Joe Jones?
That's right, brother. Ugly. And so literally, I worked my tail off. My wife and I, we walked at least three quarters of the Third Ward, bro, knocked on doors. I never forget it because my youngest son, Miles, was, buddy was, was about two years old. No, he was, he was one. Miles was one. And we were just, we were pushing him in his, you know, in his stroller and going from door to door, man, knocking on doors, meeting people, and came up short, but I've always had a love for politics, always.
Yeah, so just transit, so how long ago, or how long in between then your next run for public office?
Yeah, after that.
Between that and 2016?
Yeah, it was, so 99 I ran, and then I put my name in the hat again, I forgot what year it was, it was for an appointment in the Third Ward, and I was a finalist. It was in the 2000s, clearly, and I was going up against James White. And he was selected. But then I just kind of gave it a rest. And again, it always had in my heart to want to serve and to engage in a more intimate way. And that's, that's always been my aim. And so opportunity presented itself when the mayor ran and successfully, you know, or, you know, won the election for mayor. And it was like, hey, why not? So, yeah.
Well, I'm a big fan. I supported, just in disclosure, your reelection campaign.
Thanks, bro.
Yeah, well, and the, but I think what's interesting right now is I, a week and a half ago or so, timestamped of is today, I'm not sure exactly when this episode will come out, but I interviewed Mark Washington. And one thing I was, as I was getting prepared, he's the city manager of Grand Rapids, the first black city manager of Grand Rapids. And it got me thinking about all the firsts. For one, anyone who thinks there's not racism still existing, we're still experiencing a lot of firsts in our own community, right?
We really are, yeah.
A lot of firsts, first female mayor.
Yep.
First black city manager. First, first black city attorney.
Yes.
Who's the supervisor, controller dude, right? Who's, he's a new position, not the comptroller, but the, you know, I'm talking about.
You're talking about.
He works for market.
Yeah, you're talking about.
Oversight, oversight.
Brandon Davis.
Brandon, first black city police chief.
Correct.
Our city commissioners, if you just look at them, must be the most diverse, I think, in our city's history.
Ever.
Gender, racially.
Yes.
Backgrounds. That's a lot of firsts for 170-year-old city. Grand Rapids, 170 years old. How is it, Joe, in your opinion, that we get to 170 years old and sitting in Grand Rapids, and we're still having waves of firsts with minorities in different segments of the community having a seat at the table? Why is this, Joe?
You know, I believe it speaks to the fact that our city in many ways has historically been a place that is relatively closed. And so, as you know, Grand Rapids is very relational. Some would say that it's really hard to break into the city. There's the old saying that if you ain't Dutch, you ain't much. And so, as, you know, in terms of people of color, I've always thought that there has been a history of a lack of opportunity, in particular for African-Americans and Latinx in our beloved community. And, you know, to be the first, you know, within the last five years, it is, it's both, it's a celebration, but it's also relative, sad, you know, because to your point, 170 years, you know, a new millennium, what the heck? And we're just getting to being, you know, to having certain, you know, barriers being broken.
Yeah.
It's, but, but yet, if you look at it, I think from the perspective that I try to look at it, it is, you know, it's, it's, it's progress. Maybe not the pace that we all want it, but it's, it does speak to.
I think that's, it's an optimistic way to put a veneer on it, but it's still, to me, I'm speaking personally, I'm not speaking for you, it's kind of sad.
It is, it is.
And it just, to people in the community who may be on the fence about, well, I don't really see it, I don't really see the, you know, the problems, or I don't see where the barriers are, or where there's, you know, systematic things, these are all like hot terms right now, and some people get real inflamed about them, other people go, what do you mean by systematic thing? Well, let's figure this out, you know, what is, what do you mean, that the repeating cycles like this, which we are? But it's, to me, it's, it's not just sad, but it's just also speaks to the invisibility of some of these barriers that we face as a community, because they're ingrained on us, and especially to white folk, if I can be white people, I can say folk, can I?
I'd say it all the time, brother, without the S. That's the proper way to say it, folk. That's right.
Okay. You know, I mean, it's, unless you experience the bumping into those barriers, which you never will, if you're white, or live in a different part of the city, or you're in the suburbs, not going to experience any of that stuff. So the fact that we still have a lot of historic firsts happening in a kind of a domino fashion, you know, we had Lyman Parks in the 70s as our first African-American male, and never since.
Correct.
So I think it was 72 or 71 or 70, somewhere around there. But I don't really, that was a really great, like stupid soliloquy for me, but I'm, I'm interested in, you know, is this an exciting time? And when I, I'm excited about the, these progresses, especially now in the city when we're facing civil unrest, we had property damage, we have a lot of people raising their voices, getting noisy on both sides about stuff. And I think we're well-suited, and I said to Mark Washington, you know, I mean, I hope the deck is stacked here to get some things going in a way that's very positive for the entire community. And I don't know, I think the biggest battle is getting people to not, to understand and wrap their head around that it isn't an either-or proposition, that getting more people to the table is going to benefit everybody.
Correct.
And do you have any perspective about, just as you move through this challenging time, how, how are we, how are you best, how do you handle moving policies that some people are promoting or supporting policies that some people feel are they're losing something out of the deal, losing control? And then being able to create consensus in this contentious time? Maybe that's a better question, not about policy, but how do we create consensus and alignment around ideas when some people always feel like there's something's getting taken from them?
You just said a whole lot in terms of, no, just, you're spot on with regards to the mindset of today for a lot of people. The automatic assumption is, is if you're looking to improve the life chances of those who have been historically marginalized, that equates to something being taken from those that have. I'm the guy who are, who always reminds folks, last I checked, it's a pretty big pie. And so to assume that there's not enough pie for more people is shortsighted. And it actually is, I think in many ways, it's, it speaks to what I would say is the foundation of a lot of what we're dealing with, and that's fear.
Yeah, right.
It's, I mean, it's just as simple as that, man, that we have, you know, we're in a day and an age right now where we have fear of the unknown, we have fear of the other. We have fear of the unknown in terms of the days to come, because we're sitting in the midst of pandemics. And I think that, and I think on top of all of that is this fear of, as you mentioned, this fear of loss, of being, of something being taken from. And so, you know, as I'm having conversations in community around some very delicate topics, bro, I'm gonna tell you something right now, man. You know, you talked about the public, public sentiment and the community voice. Man, that thing is on steroids right now, do you hear me?
Yeah, I do.
Regardless of what the issues are, it doesn't matter, folks are coming to the microphone and going to their computer and typing letters and emails and developing correspondence that speak to what they believe in. And unfortunately, quite often, it does not leave much room for anything resembling consensus. It is about, you know, hey, if you don't see things from my perspective, then you are trash.
And to equal weight, you know, it's both sides.
It is.
I see that really pointed, direct, often uninformed and just stubborn, uninformed is worse than being stubborn by far, but we see it on all sides. Emotions are high, as you said, like, we seem to all have a tremendous stake in everything right now, everything. And that makes the process of governing harder, because you're supposed to govern on consensus and bridge building and moving people along and together, when right now, as you said, it's, it's gotta be, I don't want to read your inbox, you know?
Dude, true story, we've probably received well over 7,000 to 8,000, about 7,000 correspondence since the riots regarding the police in the community, both for and against, a total of 8,000, okay? There was a time in which those correspondents were coming, there were a couple coming in every minute, because I have my, my email connected to my phone, and my phone's just going off, just all day long, dude. And, you know, it was, it was, I can appreciate it because I'm a firm believer in the First Amendment right. I'm like, you know, you got a voice, use it, all I ask is that you do so in a way that's respectful.
Yeah.
And that's all I ask for. But, you know, there are those in our midst who, they operate from a place of, it's, it's better to be aggressive with, they believe, they believe it's better to be aggressive with their message. And so they just kind of do so without, without really considering the need to be respectful. And so I will tell you, there's been a couple of times where I've had some, some constituents who I've literally, Brian, had to stop them in mid-sentence and ask the question, who do you think you're talking to? Right? Because last I checked, I'm a grown freaking man, you hear me? And so I know you, obviously you feel very strongly about this subject, but let's just, you know, I need to remind you, I'm a grown man. I've not disrespected you. I might say you not disrespect me, right? And so very, very contentious.
Yeah.
And I think part of what I see as a solution, what I try to do, I think that context is important. And to your point, you mentioned earlier about the, you know, the dangers of being misinformed. My brother, I would say that the vast, that a good chunk of folks who are engaged in some of the more complex issues in our midst are operating quite often without all the facts, and that's understandable, because there are certain things that we are made aware of in the role that we play as elected officials, that we aren't at liberty to share. So it's like, I'm not in a position to just kind of like lay everything out and say, okay, here's everything that I'm using to base my decision.
Right.
Because some of it is confidential, some of it is, it's, it's attorney-client privilege type thing. I'm not in a position to just kind of put it all out there.
Right.
And I can't tell you how many times, and I would never say it, but how many times I've wanted to say, since I've been elected, especially during the times in which we've had very difficult conversations, I've wanted to tell the community, trust me. But dude, that just, for a lot of people, they're like, whatever, whatever, I don't, you know, I know who you are, you know, I like you, I respect you, but this idea of, you know, because in the, back in the day, you say that, people are like, okay, I'm gonna, okay, if you say trust you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna trust you. Now, no, dog, it just, no.
Well, I think there's two parts to that. One is, I think it depends which, which community is really grinding your ass, you know? I mean, I think if it's from a place where people have been disenfranchised for a long time, I think you can say, well, we've been trusting people, we say that people are going to do the right thing. I'm not putting you in any particular bucket, but I'm saying, okay, I can understand certain frustrations in the community and the need for action now, especially when everything comes in, you know, socially news, all this stuff, covering live events, the riots downtown, all this stuff, it's like, you know, now we're gonna, you know, it's like at this pace that you can hardly breathe and make decisions. And the pace of government intentionally is slow, you know, by design. It really needs to grind, the justice is slow.
Yes.
But hopefully we arrive at justice, and that doesn't mean that things can't be accelerated. But at the same time, I understand the frustration from, from certain segments of the community, I understood the violence.
Absolutely.
I understood the violence.
Me too.
And just to retread, I do want to touch back on that, because I think the violence for me downtown, and I'm speaking of, was that Memorial Week, on May 30?
May 30.
Thank you. You know, there was a lot of, you know, damage and all this stuff. And for me, my takeaway was like, yeah, I hope, you know, I know a lot of those business owners down there, you know, a lot of those storefronts I patronize, and they were getting smashed in, and Sanchez Building was on burning, or had a dumpster underneath, it was some pretty touch and go moments, it could have been a lot worse than it was. And it was bad. Cops' cars got burned. I understood the, I understood the frustration. I don't know that necessarily the people acting out at that point were the people who are truly disenfranchised, but it had a moment and it took, but I have two points, and then I want to hear everything you have. And I have two takeaways that I think are pretty, pretty solid, but at the same time, I'm a man who's not, no one is fully informed. You know, I'm not fully informed, I'm curious, I want to learn, I'm from parts of town that I'm trying to have, I don't have the perspective of most of the people who have been very disenfranchised systematically over the years, so I'm really trying to listen and change and evolve with facts and become informed, right? So my first takeaway from the riots was that I was not clutching my pearls about the damage downtown. Sad that it got to that point. My other takeaway was that if we had attacked the cleanup, you know, the cleanup of the city was attacked so quickly with this overwhelming support. You had glass, you had people cleaning up graffiti. I think by 11 o'clock on Sunday, that place was cleaner than downtown ever been, and we have a very clean downtown. And then, so I'll get, I'll get to my point. If we would attack some of these other social problems we have, social injustice problems, from all points of the community that came down with brooms, came down with, you know, dust pans, trying to help, boarding up buildings that had broken glass, I think we could move along a lot farther towards that equity stake that we have, but it just, those are more abstract problems that are harder to see than a broken window, but people think, oh, these businesses were victimized. And I'm like, no, I, yeah, they were victimized, they didn't ask for that, they weren't.
Right.
But at the same time, I'm not, I'm not torn up about property, I'm torn up about how we got that frustrated in the beginning, and I also need to tip my hat to the police department at the time that there weren't any people seriously hurt.
Right.
On both sides, they showed a lot of restraint in a very chaotic time. They let the air out of the balloon enough that it didn't burst and get really bad, but that was my one takeaway. So can we just talk from your perspective? Let's talk about that, because I even forgot what my other lockdown point was. I'm so impressed with myself, I'm sorry. But no, I just, I didn't have, I just didn't care about the property. They all have a business insurance, they all are going to be open tomorrow. Sad, it's a stain on the city for sure, that there was violence, but I don't put it on the people that were frustrated. You know, that's a, we're in it together, so that's a kind of together problem for me, and I don't know if there's anything you align or disagree with, with that as a city commissioner, you trying to lead through that, or what your thoughts were about that?
No, you are, I think you're spot on. Again, you know, I had the unique opportunity to be present during the riots. I had decided to go down, actually, I was invited to come and pray over the marchers. I'd gotten a call from the organizers asking if I would come and pray for the marchers before the march began, this was a couple of days before. So I made my way downtown to Rosa Park Circle, I got there about 15 minutes in advance, and as I arrived, I noticed that people were leaving. And so I couldn't find the organizer, and I'm, I just, I was led to believe that perhaps things were taking a different turn. And so I just kind of stood there on stage and watched as people began to head south on Monroe and then make a left, which is going east on Fulton. And everything in my mind said they're going to the police department, because at that time throughout the country, that's what most protesters were doing, they were going to the police station. So I jumped in my car and I drive back over in that vicinity, I end up parking a little bit farther up Fulton, near Lafayette, and I walk down to the corner of Fulton and Division. And I sit and I, I just watch as the, the crowd grows, and they literally had the police station surrounded. I'd say a fair number, a fair guesstimate would be about three, three to 5,000 people.
Yeah, it was a big, the daytime protest was definitely pretty big.
Yeah, it was, it was significant size, significant in size. So I sat, I stood around for like an hour or so, and, you know, very peaceful protest, they were chanting, and that was that. So I get home and I get a call from some folks in the community who were down there and say, hey, Comish, you might want to make your way back down here, it's getting kind of chippy. I said, what's up? They said, well, I know that there's some folks who are trying to get into the back of the police department, they're trying to pull up the overhead door. And then I got another call saying, Comish, they actually put chains on the outside doors of the police station on Monroe Center. And, and so I headed back down, and I was looking for the city manager, and he was in the, what's called the Emergency Control Center, I guess, I forgot the proper name. Anyway, that was in the police station, so I couldn't get to him, so he suggested, he said, why don't you just go to the city? city hall? Cause I know the mayor was, was coming back down too. So I came back down there and so I reached out to the mayor and said, hey, heading back down, are you heading back down? He said, yeah. I said, you mind if I join? He said, cool. So we sat, uh, in her office and we watched the television footage and we recognize, you know, we saw the damage that was being done. And we both had made the decision that we were gonna go and, and walk. We're gonna walk the streets. And so also Brandon Davis came down. He's heading, the, the gentleman who was up oversight and accountability. He was there too. So the three of us walked the streets of downtown Grand Rapids about 1:30 in the morning. And we saw the damage that was being done.
Right.
And to your point, you said it earlier, the rage, um, you could feel it, you could see it. It was like nothing I've ever experienced because usually this is stuff that you see on television happening in other cities.
Yeah, surreal for sure.
Very surreal. Um, and folks were just going ham on windows and public property and just, if it wasn't bolted to the ground, brother, they were picking it up and throwing it. It was just, it was wild. And to your point, I would suggest that it clearly wasn't just those who had been, um, historically marginalized who were doing the damage. In fact, I think it's fair to say it was a lot of folks who just, I think, I mean, in some ways it was their profession. Um, and so.
They're for a good time.
Yeah, yeah. And so we literally, we walked and every other time, every other building, the mayor would say, oh my gosh, oh my gosh. Because of the damage that was being done, but again, there was a, a feeling that I had, like you could feel it in the air, you could hear. Dude, I want you to just imagine, it's like there's no music, there's the sounds of the city, which, which inclusive, which, which is inclusive of broken windows, um, stuff being smashed, car alarms being going, going off. You could just, it was surreal, right? One of the, one of the, 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 the oddest, strangest and coolest things was as we're walking, and we all have masks on, right? As we're walking, um, people were like driving by and they're saying, mayor, is that you? They recognized the mayor, bro. And, and they like, they pulled over and they came over and they started talking to her. And she availed herself and listened. And they apologized. They were like, you know, we're here, we're down here because of this and that. And we're down here because we're, we're tired of being treated, you know, we're, we're tired of being mistreated. We're, we're tired of the police. They, they had a litany of, of reasons why they were down there. But very apologetic and said, it was nothing against you, mayor. That happened like three times, bro. It was like, people just like literally slowing down, looking at their car and just coming. And so that was, that was, that was, I, I think an opportunity for people to recognize the mayor as very human, very much, you know, in touch and, and, and available.
Yeah.
I then, you know, we, we then walked back to the city hall and the mayor had to head upstairs to finish up a, um, a statement that she was gonna make. Brandon and I left and I went home and I stayed up until about four o'clock in the morning. I did two interviews, one with Wood TV, one with Fox 17 by phone. Got up at like seven o'clock in the morning, went back downtown for the, you know, just to watch the cleanup. Um, and to your point, if there was as much energy and effort and just pure determination, uh, put towards some of the more, uh, complex and big issues of the day, if that same energy was put toward those things, I believe it would solve them. Because to your point, bro, it was like people were, I mean, it was everything from, I mean, I saw people on their hands and knees scrubbing. I mean, it was like in the, in the, in the, on the sidewalks, right? And so, you know, it was that evening, that night when it happened, um, I tell people, at least for me, my life changed, man. My life changed. I was on an emotional roller coaster. And to some extent I still am, but for that first month thereafter, man, bruh, it was, I would just have these fits of just sadness and just being overwhelmed because everything was coming to a head. I'm a, I'm working diligently to be a historian. And so in particular about the African-American experience. And so to your point, I understand why. I understand the rage.
Yeah.
I understand the, the, uh, the, 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 uh, the language. I understand the, the, the plea for equity and for justice. I get it. I get it. But to see it happen and to be there present and to hear not just the side of those who want justice, but those who feel like, hey, you need to get those folks under control. And we were, we were hearing it all.
Yeah.
Right? From, from our perch, we, we were just, and so it was, it, it has not, my life has not been the same since. And so yet I recognize the time in which we're in, um, as a real opportunity. Uh, that it's, it's an often quoted, um, mantra that, uh, many have used. And, and it goes like this, um, never let a crisis go to waste.
Right.
And so here we are in the midst of a crises. And I'm looking at this as a golden opportunity to promote equity and to try to find a way to really improve the life chances of African-Americans and Latinx in our community like never before. To where more and more people can get a bite at the apple. They can get access to opportunities. They can get access to prosperity and they can have access or, you know, be able to tap into improved life chances, right? But we are, it's, it's, it's happening at a time in which the economy's taking a hit. And yet in many ways, we've hit rock bottom, like, like we're starting over in a lot of different ways. And so again, I see it as a wonderful window opportunity that's wide open. Don't know how long it's gonna be open. I mean, I, I think we can agree that soon after George Floyd, you had a number of corporations, both local and throughout the world, who were just doing all they could to show support for black folks.
Yeah.
Making significant contributions, pledging their support for Black Lives Matter. I mean, making very strong statements and posting them. It was over the top and making a commitment to diversify their workforce, their management, ownership, everything. Some would say that's a thing of the past, like, like what happened to that energy? I'm of the opinion that we need to keep on, keep, keep, keep our foot on the pedal. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm a communications guy. I believe that words matter. And so we need to be ever thoughtful about the importance of narrative for such a time as this.
Yeah.
Right? And so what's, what's being put out there?
The easiest thing to hijack though is the narrative.
Absolutely. We see it every day.
Every day. So maintaining, I think the signal, the signal strength. It's hard when it's so easy to corrupt messages. Take a soundbite, play it out of context. Say something you didn't say. Say, just blatantly say, well, they said this at the city commission meeting or whatever, larger, whatever layer of, I'm not putting on, I'm not putting on government to solve our problems. It's, it's an us problem too. But certainly in the city and other, and government entities can lead the way towards solving some of these problems that we seem to be unwilling to solve ourselves, right? But I, I 100% agree, but the narrative, so if you're a communications guy and the, and the narrative, and if the narrative is now, well, we have an opportunity to speak, we have everybody's speak interest. I mean, speak metaphorically to how we want our community to work better for more people.
Yep.
Is that, do you feel at this point, the, the narrative is becoming sort of a, in line with one another and moving forward or? How are you, uh, how are you feeling about, you know, in light of the city committee? Like, I mean, Grand Rapids often is, it is very historically, you know, we're in the north, but very segregated city. So, you know, we don't have a segregated leadership, city leadership anymore. That's great. That's the first step. Then, um, from here, it's like getting all the, but there's, oh man, Joe, I, I don't even know how to tell you like how complicated I understand these problems are and how you move and lead, help lead the city is nearly, it's not impossible, but it's impossible to please everybody.
Oh dude, you, you just, it is virtually impossible to please everyone. And I think there are some in our community who have been given that task and it's impossible. And I can't help but to think about and mention our police chief.
Yeah.
He is in an impossible position. He happens to be a really good man who's trying his best, but it's, you know, and not just him, it was his predecessor. It, it's, it's pretty much anyone in that position throughout the country, this, this, the head of law enforcement, right? And, and because you have all these competing narratives and, and, and differing opinions. And, you know, I will tell you this, that I depend heavily on a couple of things when it comes to leading. One is I depend on, uh, my faith walk, which is something that I can't just kind of put in the drawer and put away and only use it on Sundays. It's with me. It's part of my DNA. It's who I am.
Well, it's part of your profession.
Absolutely. There's that too.
Just for the audience, I mean, Joe is also an ordained pastor. And, um, are you, do you head up a church right now?
I am actually, uh, assistant pastor over at Brown Hutcheson Ministries. Actually my, my pastor is my colleague, Nathaniel Moody.
Oh, cool. All right, awesome. I'll let you get it back on your point. Sorry. But, well, you were talking about faith as being part of your, um, informs your, uh, ideas and decision-making around leadership or these problems that are coming up.
The, the other is I really depend heavily upon history. Just may I tell you something, bro? There's something to be said about, you know, the wisdom, uh, that suggests that there's nothing due unto the sun. So, I mean, I really spend a lot of time trying to get a better understanding of how was this handled back in that day? And not to say I'm gonna look to copycat it, but it, it provides, I think, context and insight to be able to make good, solid decisions today that you know, aren't gonna be always widely accepted. And you have to, I think, live with that, especially in today's politics, because there's always the threat of, you know, folks saying, I'm coming after you when it's time for reelection or I wanna recall you. And it's just like, you know what? Again, I'm going to, uh, you, you, you elected me and I'm gonna, I really, I'm gonna hope that you recognize that I'm just not kind of making decisions off the cuff here, that I'm literally trying to make some very thoughtful decisions. I'm trying to be as discerning as possible. I'm trying to tap into history. I'm trying to tap into the wisdom of my elders. As well as the wisdom of the younger generation. It's, it, it's actually being said now that you're missing something if you don't have a mentor who's, uh, if you don't have a, a mentor who's an elder and a mentor who is a, a millennial. And so I have, I have millennial mentors and.
That's great.
Yeah. And some would say that's crazy. I'm not, no, you, you need that. Um, and so we're, we're, you know, when it comes to decision-making these days, it just is, um, you have to take a number of things into consideration. But I think at top of mind, it has to be really discerning and trying your best to understand what the potential, um, unintended consequences could be. And how can I do my best to minimize unintended consequences?
Yeah.
Because they're there dude, and you don't.
Yeah.
You don't see them obviously until it happens. It's like, ah, be, right?
Yeah.
And some, at, at, sometimes it's just, it's too late.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm, and yet, you know, I, 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 I feel like I've been built for this.
You're right, right.
You know, for such a time as this. I really do.
Yeah. Uh, well, I would agree. I, I think, um, it's, you're a unique mix between pastor, council, leader, you have to listen.
Yeah.
You really, that's probably the hardest part. You know, I mean, I, I shouldn't say what the hardest part is. They're all difficult. But having the true perspective to, it requires tremendous amount of humility to do what you do, to be effective at it. There's lip service to humility. There's, yeah, listen, I'll make you feel like whatever, but to really understand and, and have the type of empathy required to make these types of humble decisions where people can, you can make decisions that minimize unintended incomes, outcomes, as you mentioned. But also don't create any outcomes where people are overly penalized or overly, as, you know, to what we were talking about 20 minutes ago was, you know, these, uh, you know, you drew, truly create a loss that is out of whack with something else. And we tip the scales too quickly and they flip over and fall down. But, um, yeah, the other point I had, I have two, uh, and the second point to my other ones about not getting, you know, about cleaning up the windows. The other thing about our city, and I, I love DGRI and I love all of the city manager, management that has reacted really quickly. But if you look downtown, uh, now how you drive and navigate through the city, again, I'm gonna make the same point, different example, right? There's barricades up and all these dining zones and you can drink openly downtown now in certain zones, carry cocktails, which like, I'm telling you from, from a guy from Detroit, you know, the fact that you could carry an alcoholic beverage outside of a bar or restaurant and go down a block that way and just enjoy it Mardi Gras style or like, like, you know, the Beale Street in Memphis or something, you know? Like, mind blowing, the amount of, that was unthinkable, not that long ago. Like preposterously a joke that that could happen. So to underscore our other point about cleaning up the city is you, streets are now that we're two-way or one-way now. There's a lot of cement barricades up to create dining on the street and help save basically the entertainment and food businesses downtown. And again, the speed at which city government moved with all the other city services, uh, streets and, you know, I mean, the amount of coordination and tons of cement and barricades that were moved in a matter of a couple of weeks to create dining zones that were COVID safe, that would help one industry in town, which was food and entertainment. Again, if we attacked educational problems and, you know, equity imbalance and, and how schools are funded and, and just how, whatever it might be, could be in entrepreneurial dollars available, catalyst grants, you know, the amount of money that's invested in the third ward versus the, the second ward down, you know, I mean, the, the imbalance is crazy, right? But we moved, we literally changed how you can move through the city so quickly. And I, I'm not even knocking it. It's a part of what makes downtown, uh, salvageable right now for economically, there's still stuff to do downtown and it's safe. And the amount of boxes that had to be ticked to make all that happen so quickly, I have my hats off to everybody that had a played a part in that. And the business owners who drove how they should, you know, the city really listened to how stuff should work or how might work better. But again, same point. The reason all this stuff is going on is not just COVID, but it's a lot of other stuff in our city. And again, it's just, we don't get the attention. The investment, even if it's just how we thinking about mobility in the city, well, let's talk about mobility and education. How, let's talk about mobility in job opportunity, job training. Our criminal justice system, how we police. And I think to Chief Payne, I, I'm gonna talk too long here, but I do have a setup question about Chief Payne, cause you brought up Chief Payne and I think he is a great guy and he's well-suited for this role at this amazingly difficult time. I'm quite frankly, if I can speak of race, I'm really very pleased we have our first black police chief in his role today, especially in light of 2020 and this year and the unrest that has happened and the pressures in the police departments around the country. I think, uh, we are lucky that we, we don't have the same old police chief downtown. Not, not discrediting any other person who has held that role. But it does diffuse some of it because I think he has a unique purview. I think his heart's in the right place, but I'll get, I just have one earthen, I want your take as a city commissioner is, we have a tremendous amount of uptick in gun violence in Grand Rapids. We've had, I think we've reached last year's murder total already, right? And deaths pretty quickly. And, uh, so part of that is economic related, some of it's gang related, some of it's COVID related, some of it's all this implosion of 2020, right? But, um, in, in Eric Payne's new vision for the police department, he says very boldly, hey, uh, he's in writing and he says it many times. He says it on a lot of public platforms. He wants Grand Rapids Police Department to be the most trusted police department in the United States.
Correct.
Number one, most trusted.
That's right.
Fantastic goal. Fantastic goal, I have no problem with that goal. So, in reaction to the gun violence, oh, the other thing, I give him and Mark Washington credit, yourself credit, a lot of city commissioners have acknowledged, our police department has played a role in a lot of injustice and racist outcomes and racist, well, I should say systemic problems in communities of color and impoverished communities, they're over policed, they're overstopped, they're treated differently than other parts of the community, right? First step is to admit we have a problem, right?
Right.
And, and he's worried, I have no doubts about Chief Payne's commitment and his intent. So, we have this uptick in violence, and I'll get to my question, is one of the first reactions, we've now had two major sweeps, beefed up patrols, a lot more stops over weekends to help combat police, gun violence and just violence in general in certain parts of the city, which again are largely third ward and impoverished, you know, African American parts of the community, Hispanic parts of the community. A lot of beefed up patrols, which, and a lot more stops to get more guns off the street. They say they've been successful, they've got a lot of illegal guns off the street, which is good. But at what cost to the community that's already been over policed? Already, you're trying to build police trust back up, but your reaction to an uptick in gun violence is to make a whole bunch of extra felony stops, because it will be a felony stop if any police officer thinks anyone on the street or in the car is, might have possessed an illegal firearm, they're gonna be under gunpoint and put on the ground and searched until it's determined that they don't have an illegal weapon. So, it's kind of like almost terrorizing that community, because the large percentage of your stops don't result in anything.
Correct.
You're just frustrating the community.
Correct.
They're already frustrated. So, how do you balance that goal? And how do you see this policy of sweeping through for guns in the very neighborhoods that are the most disenfranchised and are most distrustful of the police to solve a gun problem and violence problem, which needs some addressing, but it seems to be a short-term payoff to me? And I'm, again, uninformed dumb dude, but I just think of myself as being in that community and I just think, you know, yeah, I wouldn't trust the police if I'd been pulled over 60 times in my life as a 52-year-old man, like, that's a tough question, but how do you, what do you, how do you wrap your head around it? Because you have to support, or, you know, in some way, the new vision for the police department.
I will say that the, the level of complexity is significant when it comes to the issue of law enforcement, policing within the African American and Latinx communities, and this balance of responding to the community's call, you know, for, for law enforcement, compared to a call for law enforcement to police in the way in which is directed by the community. You must understand that there are several of our neighbors in Grand Rapids who call the police with the expectation that they're gonna come and handle the situation. Quite often, it's some of the older, more established folk in our community who are operating our city, and once again, this, that four-letter word, fear. And they don't want that type of behavior or that type of stuff going on in their neighborhood, so they'll call the police. So, you, so you have folks who are literally calling the police. And then you have folks who are saying, hey, you don't need to be over here because you're over police. So, I want to suggest that that within itself is going to cause just never-ending tension. Because what do you tell the elder who just wants to live in a pretty quiet subdued neighborhood? You tell them, hey, cool out, the police are doing too much, right? And then what do you tell the individual, the activist who says they're in my neighborhood too much, they're too aggressive? And yet, they were called by someone who looks like you, right? And so, I think part of the solution is, it really comes down to looking at this thing, or looking at it in terms of the root cause. How do we get to a point where we have an uptick in community violence? I want to suggest, and I've said it for Medias, I think part of what we're seeing is what we're seeing throughout the country, which is an uptick in violence. I think part of it is the frustrations and all the pains that came from being, staying in place because of COVID, okay? I'm not saying that's the, that's the only reason, but I think it has something to do with it, especially for our young folks. I think secondly, whenever I talk about community violence, I talk about it from the standpoint of, of three variables. I call them POP, right? So, there's poverty, opportunity, and there's proximity, okay? So, if you are in a high dense, high-density neighborhood where the vast majority of your neighbors are operating in poverty and lack of opportunity, in that proximate location, nine times out of 10, you're going to have an area that's high crime. I want to suggest that how you combat that is you focus on a couple of different things. One is you focus more on prevention. Now, you don't, you don't see many governments or foundations and such who are funding prevention. Prevention ain't sexy, prevention does not give quick results. Prevention does not net you 15 guns on a sweep, it just doesn't.
Right.
But what it does is it literally takes that, it, it, it provides the opportunity to actually get at the problem to where you won't have an uptick in community violence because you have prevented it. Now, I want to suggest that the root cause of all of this is the whole POP thing. Hey, man, if we can do a better job with what we can do with the resources that we have as a city, city government, if we can do our best to get folks in a position where they're not in poverty, right? Where there's enhanced opportunities, regardless of where they live, you won't, you know, crime won't be, won't be an issue. How do I know? Look throughout our city, look at the neighborhoods where you have folks who are middle income, who have good-paying jobs, decent education, nice home, decent home.
Good schools.
Good schools, hey, bro, little to no crime.
I don't see cops in my neighborhood.
Come on, man, right, right, right? And so, it's like, it ain't rocket science. But when you talk about root cause, you know, folks don't wanna, they don't wanna go there because it goes back to what we said earlier, which is this idea of, okay, if you're talking about trying to get at root cause, that, that's gonna cost some money, it's gonna be a lot of resources. Where are you gonna get it from, right? So, the whole discussion around defunding police, right? Which, by the way, I think whoever came up with the term defund needs to be just.
That's your communications hat, right?
Throat punched, okay? Because it is the, it is just, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't help. It just doesn't, not in the effort to.
It's not even what it means.
Right, right, that's just, it's like one of those moving definitions, and depending who you talk to, they're gonna give you different definitions.
Talking about narratives getting hijacked, the name, you can't even get off first base because of the name.
Right, right.
You know, defun.
Defun, yeah.
What?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it doesn't make any sense
Right.
that we wouldn't have police.
Right.
And I don't, I think 99.9% of the people who are in favor of so-called defunding the police, which again, worst name, worst brand, I work in advertising, marketing and branding stuff.
It's terrible.
It's the worst name ever.
Yeah.
Reallocate.
Yeah, reallocate, right. And I will tell you that, and I'm very public with this, from the very beginning, I was calling for reimagining.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, I will tell you that there are those in our community, black, white, Latinx, they're actually, they're like, no, I don't get it twisted, I want to defund. Like, I think that all of the funds should be taken from the police department and that we should just do away, do away with the police department, that is their philosophy, that is their core belief. And they have every right to believe that, they have every right to believe in that, right? I tend to disagree, I tend to believe that when I talk about reimagining, what I want to do is I would like to put more dollars into prevention and do all that I can to minimize the interaction between law enforcement
Yeah.
and the African American and Latinx community. If I can do that, in, in a way that does, that, that does not endanger or, or make matters worse in neighborhoods, because crime is at a certain level. I think that until we can do, until as a society, we can improve the way in which police are recruited and trained and, and just, you know, the, the need for them to operate with greater empathy, the need for them to operate with a greater sense of lived experience, with them to be over, just, just knocked over the head with ongoing training and focus on de-escalation.
Yeah.
All of these things, I think, would lead to better policing. But ultimately, it goes back into the root cause. Bro, if we have neighborhoods in which folks are employed, have access to opportunities, access to prosperity.
Crime's gonna take care of itself.
Bro, it's gonna take care of itself, so now the police are getting called for some of the more simpler things. I'm not saying all crime's gonna go away, but all the violent stuff, I want to suggest that it would begin to dissipate, it would minimize.
Yeah, well, I, I agree with everything you said, I don't, I believe that, well, this isn't new, I mean, Mark Washington says it as well, I mean, police departments are, are doing too much, they're a call to do too much.
They are.
They're, they're, they get domestic disturbances and all this stuff, they deal with poverty, impoverished people, they're counselors, they have drug addiction people, like, all the, they're supposed to be able to handle all these things within the legal framework of the law and treat people with dignity, but the stresses that they're under all the time, like, they're human beings too. And I think a lot of cops are very good and well-intended and.
I couldn't agree more, I couldn't agree more.
But the roles upside down, they should, they should be like firemen. They should be like, when the fire is there, you call it. It isn't that, you know, hey, somebody's drunk on your porch and getting mouthy and loud and, you know, I mean, like, I, anyway, I don't want to get into specific scenarios, but I think the framework of saying, okay, we can create better job training, job opportunities, you just set the urban league, there's, you give people prep for the workforce. That's a, you know, the urban league is, is right in the thick of it too, of, of this area too. So, I, I hope to do a good job of setting up your bio about the multiple roles that you have in the community, but the urban league has been on the forefront for many years, about.
Almost 80 years here in town.
For trying to set up a framework and, and has a framework to combat this. It's just not enough horsepower in the sense that if you could carve out 10% of the police budget, and if it was directed towards efforts like yours, job training, better stuff, recreation, like, things to do.
Quality housing.
Yeah, quality housing, better places to live, more activities around, for kids, that they don't have propensity to get into things and groups that they shouldn't be into. You wouldn't be leading the urban league if you didn't think that that type of community service is beneficial.
Absolutely.
See that, so, it's really taking the model from the urban league, I don't want to like rubber stamp it or speak for you, but I mean, in some sense, conceptually, the idea is if you, organizations like yours and other ones, or even city departments, if it has to be city tax dollars diverted, you take that framework and that architecture and you put it in more parts of the community that need it, we'd have better outcomes.
I believe that, I, I am a firm believer in, you know, whatever we can do, and it's, it's not just a city of Grand Rapids thing, it's, it's, right now, we're in the midst of, you know, a body of work around trying to tackle racism and inequities. It requires an all-hands-on-deck approach. And so, there is not one single entity that should be expected to be the primary problem solver.
Yeah.
We need more organizations, we need more hands, we need more resources, because you're talking about, when I talk about the root causes, dude, you're talking about, you know, some things that have been, inequities that have been in place for centuries. Dude, you don't just get rid of those in a month, or two.
Right.
Or even 10 fricking years. You can, you can make your way toward progress, but we're at a point now where it's okay for us to be, it's like, we need to have this regular, we need to be, we need to be given permission on a regular basis that it's okay to be intentional, it's okay to be unapologetic, it's okay to be just over the top in our efforts to try to get at something that is, is, is continuing to put out really significantly bad outcomes. And that's what, that's what's in play right now with what's happening in the urban core of Grand Rapids, in particular with African Americans and Latinx is, you know, we're trying to do the same thing and we're getting the same results. It, it requires some sort of, for lack of a better term, shock therapy, something that is so different, right? That it kind of turns this thing upside down and people begin to do things differently. And I want to make, mention of something you just said earlier about the police. You couldn't have said it better, and, and City Manager Washington hit the nail on the head. They are being asked to do things that they weren't trained to do, bro. Much like a teacher, right? Teacher is expected to be a social worker, a teacher, a childcare provider.
Pseudo-parent.
Pseudo-parent, a psychiatrist, right? Right, you can't do that, they, they, they were, they went to school to learn how to, the art of teaching, right? A police officer is expected to be a therapist, a social worker, security, you know, a, a psychiatrist, a psychologist.
First aid responder.
All that stuff, man, and it's, it's too much, it's too much, and they're being asked to do too much. And so, part of my thinking has been and will continue to be, how can we even, how can we, you know, again, make, even make their work easier? To where they won't be so stressed, right?
Yeah.
Let's see if we can find ways to put some of that work into the hands of those who went to school for social work, for, for, you know, around, around drugs and alcohol, around, was it violence? What do you call it, domestic violence, right? All those things that the police have to respond to. And as we all know, the police, nine times out of 10, we're in it, when, when we're interacting with the police, it's at our very worst.
Yeah.
Right, and so usually, things don't, they don't turn out well.
Yeah, and, but that brings up a good point, because I think, you know, we look to government, especially around these complicated things, to solve our problems. But at the same point, the, the government should be about your fifth step towards solving a problem.
I agree.
It's man-to-man, it's conversations like this, or whatever, knowing your neighbor, reaching out, it's about human, you know, getting back to your faith and just how that informs your life. I mean, we all have this lack of, this lack of baseline sort of, in it together. Well, how can I help you? What is this, do you need anything? You know, like, if one thing I've learned from COVID is, we do have neighbors, I check on neighbors, I check on my in-laws, we check on, more of an outreach.
Right.
You know? And even if I'm in the part, if you can just extend anything, just how are you? Or what, what can I do today, is there anything you need? Tiny, almost like small gestures.
Right.
Make a big difference. And it happens from every point down the line, it could be in the richest part of town or the most impoverished. But we are all individuals, we all are in command of our day and how we react to whatever, or how we create interactions. And this all seems high-minded and whatever, but I, you know, it's hard, it's easy, but it's also hard. And that's where it gets lost, but.
Yeah, let me tell you this, there was a pastor that I came in contact with when I first got into ministry. He would always have these wise quips, and one that he would always use, I'll never forget, and it just speaks to what you just said. He would say, it's simple, but it ain't easy. Right?
Perfect.
So, you know, it's simple, but it ain't easy.
It ain't easy.
Right.
No, and that's, I mean, that's the same as anything, you can say it from a business standpoint, entrepreneur, the little things you need to do every single day to be disciplined, to be successful, it's all those things. But where do you learn a lot of those things is starting in school, and here's how you do this, and how you do that, and here's the process and the conceptual, you know, and getting, having a table set before you, where you can explore variable, varied interests that you might not have had down the road, you know, if you hadn't been exposed to something.
Right.
There's so many tiny invisible flashpoints that can set somebody on a course that's different. They're treading water one minute, and the next minute, they're swimming freestyle, you know, towards a goal, towards something. And that is, that's the secret sauce that some, I think, a lot of the resources get gobbled up. And that is, that's the secret sauce that some, I think, a lot of the resources get, uh, gobbled up in what seems urgent. You know, to give all the, and people feel safer, certainly I should say, certain people, certain parts of our city feel safer. The more money you can throw at public safety, they feel safer.
Feel safer.
They were never in danger to begin with.
Right, in the first place, right.
But we still pile on more money because that's where a lot of the influence and the, you know, uh, you know, the, it's, it's, it's upside down. And I think, uh, that I'm, I'm encouraged that we have an opportunity to really get out from underneath the hot rhetoric of, what does this mean? What does that mean? You're liberal, you're Antifa, you're this, you're that, you're, you know, you're anti-capitalism. Whatever labels we're going to throw at people in the midst of ideas challenging the status quo. At the end of the day, it's about pretty simple, but it, it ain't easy.
Simple, but ain't easy.
Yeah. But it, but I just, I, you know, it is a simple idea. It's like, well, we'll shift, uh, uh, we'll shift resources and create more micro opportunities around town, especially for young people, because that's where the lasting change. I mean, there, there is a point in no return if you're 45 and still trying to get your reading level up to a certain, you know, the, it's, that's a tough, that's a triple hard road to get down, you know? And I'm not picking on anybody in with impoverished or lower reading level or anything. It's just, fact is, it's going to be a lot harder to get on top of it. But that doesn't mean you still can't be decent to your neighbor and everybody else in town. But, um, well, I want to be respectful of your time. It's, uh, it's been awesome, but I, is there anything you wanted to button up with the, the resources, opportunity, the, where the city commission's at right now? Anything like, you got to cover your butt on?
Well, I, I tell you what, man, I, I, I want to, I want to leave people with this. What I have been professing for some time now, um, for the, for the days in which we're living through, uh, I'm just really encouraging people to the best of their ability to do all that they can to extend, extend some grace to one another. You know, man, uh, just to the best of your ability in your own unique way, please do all that you can to extend grace to others. I recognize that, uh, we all have significant value, uh, but that there are those who walk amongst us who don't feel as if they have any value at all. Part of it is because they have been marginalized and they have been, they believe the lies. Uh, others who walk among us who feel as if, uh, who, who are overvalued. And they feel as if they deserve everything and more. Uh, but through it all, we have to just, uh, hold, uh, hold fast to the, the fact that, um, you know, we are all made in God's image, brother, and there's no big I's, little u's. And quite honestly, uh, I am, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm believing that Grand Rapids, uh, has the potential to be that model city in the country, that model medium-sized city that will get some of these things right. And again, I'm just, I'm, I feel blessed to be in a position where I can be a part of that change. I do.
I just want to clarify towards the end that I respect everybody in city government who's trying to do the things that you are, the things that you just articulated, that we do have an opportunity in the city to really take this moment in time and say, okay, it's hard, but there's an opportunity here that hasn't existed historically to bring up your historic, historical references. You know, there's, there's going to be some signals about how we maybe should, what might be the best path forward. But this is our time.
It is.
It's our moment in history to move something forward. So, man, I just appreciate you as a friend and your service and, um, this has been a lot of fun.
You're a gift, man, know that.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much. And, uh, we'll be talking soon, sure.
Yes, sir.
The Full Exposure Podcast is brought to you by Metro Health, University of Michigan Health, and Dr. Peter Hahn. In appreciation of the creative and artistic visionaries who enrich our lives through cultural connections.